Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council meeting Wednesday, October 11th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. One meeting please. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Roll call please, Allison.
Counselor Maudie.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak. Counselor Newton.
Present and remote.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Present. Thank you very much, Allison. Next on tonight's agenda is a special presentation, Neighbor to Neighbor on Jared Rogers. It's a verbal presentation. Yes, on the microphone, please.
Yeah, my name is Jared Rogers. I work with Neighbor to Neighbor Mediation. Our office is actually right across the street from the city hall here. Yeah, we're a nonprofit dispute resolution center. So, and the main thing we provide is mediation. There can be other things in there with facilitation and restorative justice dialogues, but our bread and butter is mediation. And we're able to provide that free of charge through grants we get, and we operate in Marion, Lynn, and Benton counties. So anyone in those counties can reach out to us and receive free mediation. There are other centers if in your dealings with people, if somebody's in another county nearby, there's other centers that serve other counties around Oregon. But yeah, so mediation can be a really beautiful thing when everybody's willing to do it. How we operate, there are mandatory mediations in some settings, court ordered for custody and divorce mediation, things like that. That's not something we really do. But the community mediation we do would be between neighbors, between groups of neighbors in a workplace, around a barking dog, any, really anything that people would agree to sit down and talk about, we can mediate in those situations. And that's our community mediation. We're also involved with the Lynn and Benton County Small Claims Courts, as well as Marion County. In Marion County, we're able to have mediators in the circuit court there as well, and we have just capacity issues with being able to expand and provide those services in other courts. But it's really a mediation is a way to improve access to justice for people that might not otherwise be able to get that. Court systems can have their own barriers if you need an attorney, or you just don't know what the process is. And mediation is a more informal way to address whatever issue somebody might have. And with the help of a mediator, being able to have difficult conversations and ultimately hopefully reach some sort of agreement that people can walk away with and refer back to in order to deal with that conflict moving forward or avoid that, avoid a similar conflict. Our mediators are trained in accordance with the Oregon State statutes. There are some laws regarding the amount of training and what is involved in that training. It's a 40-hour course that we put on, and all of our mediators are actually volunteers. I can't say enough wonderful things about them. They, some of them are former attorneys or current attorneys. We have former judges, HR professionals, accountants, just from all sorts of backgrounds, and they all volunteer with us as mediators to provide this service to anybody that might want it. But as I mentioned a little bit ago, it is voluntary. So what we do is we will reach out to both parties and see if they're both willing to come together and try mediation. If they are, if every, once we get to the table, we actually have around a 90% agreement rate. But that's not counting everybody that might not want to come and sit down and have that conversation. And oftentimes, it's just the mediator, a neutral third party being there and present, and we'll just sit back and do nothing. And people are able to have a respectful conversation with just a referee on the sidelines. And so it can be, for whatever reason, having somebody else that, for lack of a better term, just doesn't have skin in the game and is just helping them have that conversation can be incredibly helpful for people. Yeah, and I, I don't, there's a lot I could say, but I want to open it up to questions if.
So, yeah, well, thanks for that. I appreciate your presentation. Counsel, do we have any questions for Jared? Hold on, she's, I want you to hold on. So somebody else can go ahead and go while she's getting her mic.
I'd like to know where you get referrals.
Yeah, that's a great question. So where we get referrals from a number of different places, oftentimes other social service agencies, like the Senior Center, 211, or what Community Action Agency, Community Services Consortium, I think is the local organization here. And we actually, we do some parent-teen mediation as well. Disclaimer that we're not counselors. We don't provide therapy or counseling. But it can be really helpful. We'll partner a lot with Jackson Street Youth Shelter, and when they're looking for reunification between a runaway youth and the family, and we can actually sit down and we'll help them craft a reunification plan with mediation techniques. Again, not therapy, but just as they're coming home, what are helpful things to go over? So they have written ground rules so that everybody understands what needs to change and address those conflicts. But, and also code compliance and police departments are actually, can be a huge referral for us. There's oftentimes, I think, police officers get called out to disputes that they don't really have any, there's no need for somebody to be arrested. They don't have any jurisdiction to do something about it. But they can refer people to Neighbor to Neighbor, and we can reach out and see if, you know, those those lower-level disputes can get resolved through mediation before they escalate into something where the police would need to do something.
Counselor Ray, Counselor Kupczynski.
Go ahead, Matilda. I'll follow up.
Oh, thank you. I'm wondering what sort of a list you have?
Yeah, so it takes around, I think we average seven to 10 days to assign a mediator, but we actually, I think we have a roster of 125 plus, but around 60 active volunteers who will serve as a mediator. So yeah, so around a week to get assigned, and then it's just dependent on the party's availability, how soon mediation might get scheduled. And I will add in that we have remote capabilities, like most people, since COVID, we can, if needed, we can do that over Zoom. It usually works better in person, face-to-face, but in particular, trying to get out into the areas of the county where people can't drive into the offices easily or whatever geographic restrictions there might be, Zoom can be a great tool.
Well, I have said it before, but I would like to say again how glad I am to know that you exist.
Yeah, yeah.
You're helping so many people. Thank you.
Years ago, I was involved with a county program called VORP, Victim Offender Reconciliation Program. I'm not sure if that's still even going or if it's something that's kind of akin to what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. So the victim offender, and I forget what the, what was the last?
Reconciliation.
Reconciliation program, yeah. So that is, I think that's what we, I think it's sort of morphed into victim offender mediation, and there's efforts to reword that. There's some legal issues with confidentiality is a big part of mediation. When you're in mediation, what you talk about there can't be used later in court or shared with somebody that you're not privileged with. And so there's, it can be really powerful where there's a, yeah, somebody's committed harm against somebody else and being able to address that through mediation, where sometimes, yeah, just getting the, like, why did you do it? And in court, people are bound. You know, maybe they have a plea deal or whatever it might be, and they can't admit to something they actually did, or there's all sorts of legal issues there with maybe oversharing and then stuff coming up later that they might have to go back to court for. So, but through mediation, there's protections from Oregon statutes for confidentiality. But so, yeah, so it has morphed, excuse me, it has morphed into other programs, and I think in Polk County, they still refer to themselves as a VORP program.
Okay.
And just, yeah, but that is still ongoing, and I think there's efforts to expand that.
Counselor Maudie.
So do you guys provide the training for your volunteers, or are you looking for volunteers who have already had this training? And what does that training look like?
Yeah, so a little bit of both. Some people have had the training, maybe through school or somewhere else, and it is, for the most part, it's standardized across the state. So you could take the training in Clackamas County, and still we could recognize that certificate, and you could volunteer with us. But we also put on the training. We just actually finished one last week and have, I think, around 12 new volunteers that are starting with us. And the training itself is around 40 hours. It covers different conflict styles, different conflict management styles, and how mediation fits into that. And then goes into skills for mediation. There's, you know, like reframing statements and asking good questions. Active listening is probably the biggest one, just listening. And so, yeah, teaching skills, and then a lot of role-playing to practice those skills. And then through Neighbor to Neighbor, we have an apprenticeship program. So after somebody takes that, they go through observing cases and then co-mediating with a more experienced mediator, then switching into taking the lead, but having a backup that's more experienced, and then they're certified to take lead mediation moving forward from there.
Counselor McGee, do you have anything? Counselor Newton, do you have anything?
I do not. I've done a lot of research on this program. It seems like an awesome one. I love it.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
Yeah.
And thank you also for the brochures, and I'd like more of these. If you could get me a stack of them, I'll put in my office, my business office.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Persons wishing to speak to councils who signed up. I'll see what's on the sheet. Thank you. We have three members have signed up. Mr. Brad Dennis, please. You have three minutes, sir. Just your name. I don't need that. We don't need your address anymore.
Okay, Brad Dennis. I do live on Spencer Mountain Drive, which is in North Albany. The reason I want to speak to the city council tonight is to bring forth an idea that would improve the leaf pickup program that will be started here in a couple of weeks. I've lived in Albany since 1978, except for a five-year time period when I lived in Corvallis. And while I lived in Corvallis, we had the privilege, I would say, of knowing with certainty what day Republic Services would be by to pick up our leaves. They would stop by every week during, on our garbage pickup day. And I, so now that I'm living in Albany once again since 2017, I realize that the program that the city of Albany has negotiated with Republic Services has three pickup periods that each last for two weeks, but there's no certainty during that two-week time period as to when they will be by to pick up your leaves. So I've had many occasions where I see the truck going up the street, and shoot, I didn't realize they were coming today, and so I didn't get my leaves out. But by knowing with certainty what day they will be by, we avoid having leaves on the street for two weeks because you have to basically have them out there at the beginning of the two-week time period. So during that time period, leaves are blowing around, they're washing down into the storm drains, logging things up. So my request would be to encourage whoever negotiates the contract with Republic Services to please ask for certainty as to the pickup date. I think that would be a great help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Next on tonight's, tonight's list is Mike Quinn.
Mike Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N, city of Albany. I'm just here. Apparently, we're not going to have any kind of public hearing on this buying of the Gap School garage. I have some concerns. They're multitude. Hopefully, I can get through them. Are we modeling ourselves after Lynn County, I mean, one of the best-run counties in the state for a long time, with having a road fund that they can borrow from, and actually have a way of paying it back through recreational-type fees and stuff with their parks and everything else? So they've always been able to pay back their stuff. They buy Clear Lake Resort, they pay it back. They do something else, they pay it back. My concern here is, is that we're borrowing out of a road, a water fund and a road fund. And I can remember almost a little over a year ago, I thought that our water, when we came and asked about, since we have the facility paid off, why we're not having a reduction per, way previous to you folks here, the people at the task force that we had 15 years ago and stuff, said that they thought that when this thing got paid off, that we were going to have a reduction between 15 and 18%. Well, we have this $400,000 in there. I'm just curious about that, especially when we're stopping the low-income help on water that we all pay for a little bit, you know, a little tidbit on our bills and stuff. Apparently, they're doing away with part of that right now. So I don't know why we would be doing that. There has been people that I know that have came in here, and it's not that they don't qualify. It's just they said that they don't have the money to do it. So that's one thing. My question too is, this is an enormous piece of property. I know Viper wanted to try to buy it. I say $2 million on a $1.2 million piece of property. Once again, we're, you know, we don't have people savvy enough to buy things at correct prices. But I'm wondering from rumor, this is strictly rumor, that you're going to potentially let Chance have part of that on the one side, on the north side, I guess it would be, to potentially put tents out there and stuff. So if that's, I'm bringing it up so when it does happen, it's not that I said I told you so, but I'm just curious about that. So anyway, I'm really curious why we're parking just a small amount of buses over there and potentially bringing, from Public Works, going to bring our VAC trucks and other trucks up there? So then how are people going to get back and forth from down at Public Works up to there? It's an enormous piece of property for just some buses. And last thing, I could have swore that we had a piece of property that we were going to look at, potentially buying that they already bought years ago. Has anybody asked about that? I don't know where it's at, but I've just, you know, I know that there is something about this. And do we have money to remodel and bring up for conditional use permits? We're now changing, even though it was a bus station, now you're going to use it for something else. Are we going to have to bring something up to a standard and spend some more money on this lot with this old garage that's there and stuff? So, and I know you're going to go ahead and bless it tonight. I mean, hopefully, if Gap gets $2 million, if they pay down their debt and out of the $159 million bond and that, but we kind of know it's not going to happen. And I know I'm at my time and you're.
So it's actually on the agenda, the bus barn's on the agenda.
I know that. It's next, so.
So we'll get a chance to address that.
So hopefully, you guys are going to.
We'll address that.
Cover that. I mean, is it going to just be a thing where you're voting tonight and say yes, and we're going to buy?
There's always discussion whenever we do anything. So, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, oh, excuse me, the next speaker is Director Guado, Albany Downtown Association.
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to do a quick downtown update. We have some Halloween fun coming up, the downtown trick-or-treat. We also have the Trolley of Terror and Ghost Tours going on. These are all featured in our newsletter, which is available online, and I'll provide copies after. The Chamber's 120th Anniversary and Mural Celebration is set for October 18th. They're finding a 100-foot ribbon, is the rumor. I believe I also had mentioned at our last city council meeting that the Albany Downtown Association held awards. There are details on those. And also an update that two of our local winners, one at the state level, Civerus won the Business of the Year, and our volunteer Stephanie Gutierrez was recognized as with the Leadership Award, which is an elevated award above a volunteer normally reserved for people who have put in dozens and dozens of years, but she put in that much in the short tenure with us. So we do appreciate her. We have a very packed calendar, including a new play coming out at Albany Civic Theater, She Kills Monsters. That sounds like fun. And there is a new character joining the menagerie at the Carousel. That happens on October 21st. Chair Ray, Counselor, will have more on that. Our trick-or-treat, as I mentioned, is October 28th. That's a Saturday. And we also just had a quick mention of the opportunities that are occurring on Water Avenue with Obi, and then as well as the Wells Fargo lot. So we're looking forward to the discussions on how that will move forward and accommodate the needs of everyone. So that's what I've got for you this evening.
Thank you, Director. If you did not sign up, this is an opportunity for you in the galley would like to speak to council, please do so now. Thank you very much, participating. Adoption awarded a contract, purchase of Greater Albany Public Schools Bus Barn Property, Director Chris Bailey, Public Works, Page 3216 of your packet. Director Bailey?
Hello. Okay.
You share?
No. No, I just have notes. I'm not going to try that. It was tricky the other night. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're requesting that you authorize the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase property from the Greater Albany Public School District. The district declared their former bus barn property surplus and requested bids earlier this year. The city submitted a bid for $2 million and subsequently was notified by the district's representatives to begin negotiation. Our intent is to use the property as the base of operations for the fixed route public transit services in Albany, which are Albany Transit and the Limpet Loop. Additionally, there's space available to house equipment that is currently stored outside and uncovered at operations that would benefit from being in covered storage. This includes several large emergency generators, emergency drinking water trailers, which both, we have both filtration and distribution trailers, emergency pumping equipment, and seasonal equipment such as the street sanders, which are only used during the winter, and the paving equipment, which is only used in the summer. So storing those large pieces of equipment that are not used daily is going to help with the space management and operations. Operations has budgeted this year to build an additional pole barn building to help with storing of equipment. That construction is going to be postponed because we'll be able to make use of space at the bus barn property. Additionally, we intend to provide cover storage for the trolley, which is currently at the existing bus barn. So it will have a new safe home, and we can accommodate other large parks and recreation buses if they would like to store their equipment there. We can make those arrangements. Because the property is going to be used for equipment across the department, we split the purchase price among various public works funds, initially paying 40% from transit and then 20% from water, sewer, and streets each. Once we've begun to use the site and allocated the space, we're going to do a more accurate accounting for the space, and we can correct over or underpayments based on the actual usage before the end of the fiscal year. So it may end up that Transit is using 50% of the space and Streets is using 10% of the space, and we'll adjust those by doing general entries in the finance system. I want to provide a little bit more background than what was in the staff memo because the council heard more than the public has heard, so I want to provide a little bit more context. The council and some members of the public might remember that the Transit Program purchased bare land on 34th Avenue several years ago. That was the first step in constructing the new transit operations facility. The current location for Transit is an old pole barn behind Fire Station 12 on 34th Avenue. That building does not have enough stalls for the number of buses that the system operates now. So we have multiple large and expensive transit buses parked out in the weather year-round. The building also does not have running water or sewer service, nor does it have any heat or air other than a small radiant heater. It's a terribly inadequate facility, and it's embarrassing, frankly, to try to operate and have staff work from there. In addition to that, the fire department uses this space for training events, which often leads to conflicts between bus movements and fire personnel and equipment. And they would like to expand into the space Transit currently occupies to extend their training program. That goal has been in the city strategic plan for almost 20 years. And if Chief Wooton would like to come up and give a testimonial about how much he's excited about this, I would love that. So Transit saved its pennies, and we purchased the bare land on 34th Avenue. Then we applied for grant funding to design the new transit operations facility. We hired a design firm, and they got about 50% through the design, at which time the cost estimate to construct the facility was around $9 million. We anticipated applying for federal grants to build the facility. Those grants require a 20% local match. So Transit would have had to provide, if that cost estimate held up, $1.8 million. So we, Transit doesn't have $1.8 million, so we were discussing an internal fund loan between one of the enterprise funds, or maybe two of the enterprise funds, and the transit fund, which Transit would have then had to pay back and by law pay back with interest. So about that same time, we learned from the Federal Transit Administration that because the city had not followed NEPA process when purchasing the land, the FTA would not provide any grant funding to complete the design or construct the new building. This was unknown to us. It's a policy that only the FTA has. Other federal agencies don't have this policy. And we didn't, we're not aware that when you are purchasing land with local funds, that you had to conduct a NEPA process. NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, maybe, is what it stands for. And so essentially, what you have to do is follow these federal procurement processes, and the goal of the program is to, primarily to make sure that land procurement or projects conducted with federal funds do not have adverse impacts either to the environment or to disadvantaged communities. So for instance, one of their big areas of focus in larger cities is, let's say, a transit agency is going to buy land to put a new light rail line through. You have to conduct a study to determine the impact on the disadvantaged community, because oftentimes what has happened is those properties have been put right through the middle of low-income neighborhoods, which has displaced marginalized people and further marginalized them. So there's a whole process that has to go through. We would have sailed through that process with no problem, but we, we were not told we needed to do that. We never have had to do that before for any procurement with just local funds, so that we use just local funds on purpose to buy this land to try to avoid some of these issues. And then we're told afterwards that the FTA requires you to do it, even if you only use local funds.
Wow.
We're not the only agency in the Northwest that has had this issue. The FTA regional staff has told us that multiple places are having the same problem. And we tried multiple ways to try to get them to give us some sort of exception or a way to go back and do it afterwards, or, and there was absolutely no room to negotiate with them. So that property that we bought for Transit is essentially poisoned for transit funding and will not be awarded any transit funding for anything in the future unless the law changes. So we had, I, some of us, speaking, I'll just speak for myself. I had to get up and walk around for a long time after we had that meeting. I was so angry. And because the FTA knew that we were purchasing this land, and the staff, our staff version at the time didn't tell us, and I don't know if they didn't know, or they didn't, it was just an oversight, but it put us in a terrible situation because Transit can't afford to go. But it put us in a terrible situation because Transit can't afford to go out and buy more land, which was one of the solutions they suggested to us. And our transit program can't afford to do that. So we were at that point in time trying to figure out how to move forward, what do we do, what are our options? And um we had come up with some ideas, but then the gaps announcement was made. And so we started um looking into the gaps property and that's when we came and talked to the council and executive session about um moving forward with putting in a bid. So let's see, where am I? Okay, so the gaps property, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the benefits of the property. It is a large property, it is much larger than Transit currently needs. That's why we have the opportunity to use it for other city needs, not just with public works. Parks and Rec could move equipment out there. Um, any other department that needs room to store space, for instance. Um, not to throw the police department um under the train. But we do have some spaces out at operations where they have secure storage of large um pieces of evidence. That, you know, they're, they're also looking for property, everyone is always looking for property. It's a large piece of property that the city could use. The other idea that we intend to explore is um there's enough space to create a a CDL training. Um, course at the south end of the property and training rooms in the building. So currently, um, the CDL laws have changed if you don't know and and you have to go and get training, which is um. You have to do it a different way, it's more expensive. We have the ability with this property to do it in in-house onsite and give a CDL training opportunity for our own staff. There's a um, the building onsite has existing um room for office staff. Transit staff, break rooms, it actually has restrooms, um which will be nice for the transit drivers. There's an existing maintenance bay designed for buses, which is perfect for us. It has um a bus wash facility, um which currently our bus wash facility is buckets and mops. And um so while not, it's certainly not perfect, I don't want to imply that it's a. A beautiful Taj Mahal, it needs some work. It's great for us, it's a huge step up for us and it has adequate space for Transit for at least the next twenty years, if not forever. Um, let's see, so what happens to the lot on Thirty Fourth Avenue? Well, right now, it's not really costing us anything, we do have to mow it a couple of times a year. We're not quite sure what we need to do with it, what what options, opportunities it might uh offer to the city. But one thing that needs to happen before we come with you with a recommendation is um we need to finish the water master plan. And that's because it's immediately adjacent to a water reservoir. And the future of that reservoir might play into whether we keep or don't keep that property and when we might want to make that decision. So we're hanging on to the property, um if it, if we come to you and you decide to sell it. Then the proceeds from that sale would go back into the transit fund. And the other thing, Mr. Quinn mentioned, I think the only thing I haven't touched on that he mentioned, well, a couple of things. We're not getting rid of the low income assistance program for a while, I'm not sure where that rumor got started. As a matter of fact, it expanded um uh last year or the year before under federal, additional federal funding. So we actually expanded the um qualifications, so more people uh qualify now than in previous years. And the, what was the other thing?
Capping.
Oh, the Chance, so we did meet with Chance, I've met with him twice and the county, Lynn County um. Their emergency manager who's helping with homelessness issues. And initially, we met to try to see if we could share the site. Um, because it is directly adjacent to their property and they have lots of great ideas about how to expand their services. Because of the nature of their work and the nature of our work and the way the property is oriented. It didn't really make sense to try to split it in some way, there wasn't really a feasible way to try to create a new property line and split the property with them. Um, and then we talked later about could they just use part of the property and put tiny homes or huts or something like that on the property? And we talked about that and and ultimately, there are a few issues. Number one, the property is zoned for uh industrial use only, not, and you can't put a residential use on an industrial property. And I checked with our planning department, so that's a huge barrier. Um, the second thing is, it's really not appropriate to be housing people where you have diesel vehicles driving around all day. Um, it's another sort of health and environmental justice concern. And then the third thing, which would be very difficult for them is um. Those tiny homes, if they're plumbed, you would have to run plumbing and that's gonna be very expensive to connect additional services to that property. They would have to pay for that, the city wouldn't pay for that. And so, you know, doesn't seem like it's gonna work out, but we talked, we had a really good conversation and. And we're still in communication with them about wherever they do wanna expand their services, we're gonna try to help them get situated. And with that, um, I think that's all I had to say about the bus barn property and I ha- I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, you have any questions? I seen councillor Smith was first one up.
What was the purchase price of the property on Thirty Fourth Avenue?
You know, I am so happy you asked because I actually managed to remember to pull that up. But now I have to remember my password. Okay, um. Two hundred eighty seven thousand eight hundred sixty three dollars.
You know, the councillor, councillor McGee?
Um, you stated that um you will be able to use others departments and the city could use it for storage. Would you be open to non-city departments using it for storage, possibly renting it for a fee or something like that?
Um, well, we do charge the other departments when they store things on public works property. Um, uh, I think we would be open to uses that would comply with what's happening there. One of the things we did talk about with Chance was like vehicle camping or RV storage. It really, but the thing is, is that it needs to be um, as long as we can do it in a way where people are safe. And the, you know, the transit buses can move in and out appropriately and whoever else is using the property there. Um, property and and people are also safe. I don't, I don't see it, we're not, definitely not closed to that option, we would just have to look at what the proposal is. Thank you.
Councillor Smith, you good? Councillor Novak?
Yes, um, I have a question with regard to what was paid for the bus and property.
Okay.
Um, I may have misunderstood when Mr. Quinn was delivering information, forgive me, that is a little bit cutting out. What fair price that we paid, were we overcharged? I don't know what that property was valued at, we might, we probably covered that a long ago, I just, I just wanna make sure.
Sure.
We pay a right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's of course a valid question. Um, I did con- uh contact a commercial real estate broker and um. It's very difficult to get a market value on a uh bus um facility like that. Uh, she did um look at sales of property throughout the entire Northwest. And um the only thing that was comparable was um like freight. Loading and distribution type facilities, which were much more per square foot than we offered here. Um, it's really hard to know if we paid a fair price. I've heard that others, I mean, I'm sure others offered lower prices because we were the ones they chose to negotiate with. And why would they negotiate with us unless we were the highest price? Um, there wasn't anything that the, that the school district published. Other than um in a report on their, we did snoop on their website. And in a report to their board on their new bus facility, they had a a dollar figure of what they intended to. Or had hoped to get from the sale of this property as an offset to their expenses on their new property. And and Barry probably remembers, but I think we were close to the top, but not at the very top of their number that they were hoping to get. So it was not an exact science. It was not like buying a house and finding comps, we had a really hard time finding comparable properties.
Do the councillors have anything? Councillor Newton, you have anything?
I don't have anything at this time.
Councillor, councillor Montague?
I just wanna say thank you for all, I know you put a lot of work in this and a lot of thought and I really do appreciate that. Sounds like it's, it's really going to be um hopefully a uh a good property for us in the future.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Planning for the future for the city.
Yeah, it's um uh funny, I'm, I'm apparently I'm gonna have to leave the city. Because about fifteen years ago, I said, if we ever get a new bus barn, I'm just gonna quit, cuz I don't.
Okay, let's stop talking.
I don't, I thought it would never happen, I just, I mean, so difficult, so and. And, you know, I don't wanna go on and belabor the point, but the fact that we can um use it for multiple per- purposes is what is making this happen.
Well, I for one is really excited for you cuz you did a lot of work, like councillor Montague was saying. But I see Chief Becker grinning ear to ear, so I think he's pretty happy too.
Yep.
So thank you for your hard work on this in council, um. Do we need to vote on this? Yes, we do.
Yes.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to purchase the property from the Greater Albany Public School District for bus barn and variety of storage. Um, purposes and thank you for doing this, it's very creative.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to have you, thank you for your presentation. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of a consent calendar, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar, I'm.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Number seven on the agenda is staff reports. One is request to council grant funds for Albany Train Station restroom project, Director Bailey will see you just a second. Revel all you want to.
I was absorbing the moment. I know, I'm sorry, I do have.
Don't apologize, you did great.
Here we go, okay, this is not so fun.
So.
Um. Good evening again. Okay, this is an unusual and an unfortunate item that we have to discuss with you. And I don't think I've ever requested permission to um turn back a grant, so this is no fun. Um, I've provided some background for you in the memo, actually, I didn't, um Barry and Nolan Nelson did. But I'm, I'll give a summary for the public. Um, in about two thousand nineteen, the council was having discussions with lots of comments from concerned citizens. About the presence or absence of publicly available bathrooms, especially in the downtown area. One of the things that came out of those discussions was the concept of adding a public restroom at the Albany Multimodal Station. So public work staff worked with ODOT public transit staff and we talked about funding help. We eventually brought this project forward to construct a new building with two ADA accessible public restroom stalls at the train station. The previous councils voted twice to move forward with this project. I gave those presentations both times and tried to be quite upfront and straightforward about pros and cons of this project. And it was approved both times. Uh, once to apply for the grant and then again to accept the grant funding. So we received an ODOT grant from section fifty three thirty nine of federal transit funding. For a hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred dollars. That came with a, that was eighty percent of the project cost and we had a twen- twenty percent local match. So for many reasons, including delays to COVID, increases in the cost of materials and increases in the cost of construction. The price of the project has risen steadily over the last two years, three years. Um. Rising costs caused us to request supplemental funds from the State Transportation Improvement Fund or STIF. Funds which we were awarded in two thousand twenty two. Then over this, this past summer, uh Nolan, the engineer who's working on this project, again brought forward concerns about the costs. Even with the additional grant funding, we do not have enough money to cover the anticipated costs of the project, which are now upwards of four hundred forty thousand dollars. For a two stall restroom. A group of staff discussed this project with ODOT public transit staff, who agreed that this might not be the best use of public funds. The uh ODOT representative also stated that the city wouldn't be penalized for turning back the grant funding. But they would like to know by the end of October so they could make those funds available for reuse in the next application period. So therefore, our recommendation to you tonight is that we notify ODOT that we'll be declining both grants. Um, if the council would like to have a discussion how to move forward with additional public restrooms. Um, where those might be and how they would be paid for and then how the operations and maintenance of those would be paid for. Then we're happy to put that on a work session um agenda in a coming meeting. If you would like this particular project to move forward, then we need um help trying to identify the additional funding to make up the gap. Because these match funds are coming from the transit fund. And um as we know, Transit doesn't have a whole lot of room in their fund. And with that, I'm helpful, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let's let councillor Montague has a question or comment. Councillor Smith?
Two things, um first, I should disclose that I am a member of the Lynn County Special Transportation Advisory Committee. And that's the body that makes recommendations to the county commissioners for allocation of STIF funds. So I was a part of that decision-making body when those, these funds were um approved last year. Um. That said, um are there other locations that might be? Better for public restrooms related to public transit? Especially since we have moved the primary transfer point for the fixed route system to Fourteenth Avenue. Or, sorry, um Clay Street.
Yeah, um, good question, one of the challenges with this location is where we have to site the building. And it does um create some additional costs because there's a long run for electrical um that has to be um. Bored underground at a, a quite a long distance and there's also quite a, a long run, I think, for either water or sewer, I can't remember which. So if we were to look for another location, we would wanna look at a place where we can essentially sit it right on top of utilities. And avoid some of those um costs of distance that are created here. We haven't looked for other sites, um we didn't wanna get our cart in front of our horse. The property over, where we, we do now have a lot of transfers happening over on Clay Street. Um, by the mall. And um it's possible that that might be a location, we would probably have to purchase property there. Because uh I don't remember all the details, but we don't even have a lot of right of way right there for the shelters and things, so. But if, uh, we're happy to come back and we can do some preliminary looking, come back to a work session and talk about options. If the council would like it to be close to transit lines, we can do that. At the time, the discussion was more about downtown and that the train station isn't downtown. It was the closest property we could identify to, to work on at that time.
The council.
Did I answer your question, councillor Smith?
You did, I brought up more, but go ahead.
Councillor Kopczynski?
Well, this may be just tangential, but I remember uh not too long ago, we took a while to hammer out a. Uh, compromise, I call it, for having porta potty.
I knew you were.
And uh I have no qualms about um, and I was advocating and promoting that to happen on private property. So I'm still struggling with why we would try and make ODOT and or Amtrak be responsible for having a couple of. Uh, toilets down there, whereas if there has not been a ground swell that I'm aware of. With people applying businesses or private places and trying for usage of a porta potty for that purpose. Which is what the compromise was all about, uh and if not, uh I'm not sure that it's right to spend that kind of money on. Uh, making it happen where it's really not too feasible. So at, the way, the way it stands right now, I'm all in favor of your recommendation of canceling those two contracts.
So councillor, councillor Newton has comments, councillor Newton?
Yeah, um, I'm really disappointed at the suggestion to cancel the grants, you know, leaving that money on the table. It's quite embarrassing that we don't have um public restrooms at the train station or really anywhere um downtown. If um I'm in a minority here, I really would prefer us to have um. A work session to determine where we'd be able to place public restrooms, if there's something that's really needed. And uh, yeah, I, I, I would like to see us allocate funds from a different area towards this project. I think it is a great benefit and it would be a disappointment to leave this, leave this money on the table. I think it would pay off in the long run.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Novak, you have a comment?
Yes, um, I, I share the concern of like councillor Newton, but everybody around this table. That we do need public restrooms in this town, don't have any, and I do also find that embar-. Especially given that we have more people on our streets than we ever have done and everybody needs a bathroom. Especially given that we have more people on our streets than we ever have done and everybody needs a bathroom. When, one thing that came to mind was a presentation we had from someone. Some back from about Portland Lou.
Hmm.
And I'm wondering if we maybe look into that.
We certainly.
They, they might be more. Uh, costive. I don't know. I just, we need public restrooms. We used to have them down when I was a kid. They were public restroom. In the bill Mr. Lutman is currently rehabbing, the former courthouse.
Sure.
And. Need them. We need them.
Yeah, I um, I think it sounds like we need to bring back a work session item to talk about public restrooms. Um, and I. I'll just leave it at that. There's a lot to talk about.
So we'd like, are we consensus that we'd like to have them come back and talk about? Um, oh, Counselor.
Yeah, I, I definitely want a work session. I think that, you know, we need to figure that out. But I also don't think we should give up. You know, I, I get that, that, you know, we, we probably need to cancel these grants because of the increasing costs. Um, but in the future, I think we need to figure out public restrooms at the train station. Cause as we grow, there's. You know, we need to be inviting and I've been at the train station waiting and needed a restroom and it's really sucks. So. I think that we'll have to eventually figure that out. So I think, you know, it's definitely tomorrow's problem, but. We need to keep, not give up on that.
Counselor, um, my, uh, Novak had something.
Yeah, with regard to that, I've been to the train station as well and I know um. For Kupczynski, you said that Amtrak's problem. I kinda think it should be because it's the Amtrak train station and. A train station is a business and they have people that use their trains, other trains, and it doesn't make any sense to. We wouldn't have restrooms there. So if there's any way to work with Amtrak or somehow. It, it just seems to me, train station without a bathroom doesn't make any sense.
Sure, to, just to be clear, there are restrooms in the um, train station building that Amtrak leases. And they, they did put locks on them and they're for customer use only, although the staff has told us that. Guests waiting to pick up customers also will be given the code, but they, they are trying to keep specifically um. Transants and others out of their restroom because they've had multiple issues. Um, so. There are public restrooms available during the hours that that building is open. When that building is not open, there are not public restrooms available. We do have a couple of options, so. We don't have to get too far down this rabbit hole before we come back to a work session and we can present you with some of our thoughts on. On that um, moving forward.
I have one additional question.
Go ahead, please. Counselor Smith?
The four hundred and forty thousand dollar uh, figure, does that include the extension of uh, utilities?
Yes.
Okay.
And so when is your deadline or drop dead date for the grant return?
Um, well, we'd like to um, have a vote tonight because we need to tell ODOT. They're, they're gonna announce a new round of funding at the end of the month. And they wanna know if this, these dollar amounts will be added back in. Um, so we need a decision.
Counsel.
I noticed that the resolution that we have is for approving the grant applications.
Oh, no.
Yeah, um.
It's to a pre- insulation.
Oh, it's. Yeah. Maybe it's not worded very well.
A, a resolution authorizing to submit a grant application for funding.
Oh, shoot.
What page is that on?
Yeah.
It says twenty-eight, seven, twenty-eight.
I'm on page.
I think that's for a different thing.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Okay, so yeah, that was the original one. So this one is now.
I, I think.
Twenty-six is in the consent calendar. Critical Oregon Airport.
Okay, yeah.
Can we?
Correct.
Can we table this till our next council meeting at the end of this month?
Let's just do it.
They need to know.
You need to know now in order to tell them, right? You need. Right. I mean, they're, they're putting out their funding notice and they'll need to know um, if they can add these numbers back in.
The, what do we'd like to do, Counsel?
Um, I'll make a motion.
I move that we cancel the grants.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please, Allison. Thank you.
Counselor Montague.
Aye.
Counselor Smith.
Aye.
Counselor McGee.
No.
Counselor Novak.
Aye.
Counselor Newton.
No.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Aye.
The vote is four to two.
So we're gonna cancel the grants?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Director.
We'll be back with a work session.
Okay. Next on the staff reports is B, salary grade adjustment for public works and technical services supervisor, Mike Bryant, page twenty-nine of your packet.
Mayor, can we move?
Mike, how you doing?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I move that we approve um, seven B through G on our uh, agenda?
No, cause we, some of the councils would like to hear those.
Okay.
You can move it. I can't stop even doing that.
Yeah, uh, I, I wanted to make a motion to uh, go ahead and approve. Items uh, seven B through seven G um, on the staff reports.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
Counselor Novak?
True.
Seven B.
Seven B. Forgive me, I'm just rereading what those are. And so the was to, forgive me, approve items.
Them, yeah.
Seven B through G. I'm in favor of that.
So nobody wants to hear the contract, any of that stuff with the judge? Nobody wants to do that?
I'm the nobody who wants to hear.
I.
I'm the no vote.
Through, she said through G.
Oh.
If we approve it, discuss the contract, we don't.
Exactly.
Okay.
I could, I could make an amendment to change. Yeah, I, I read it too. I had no, no comments.
So let's just roll call vote in.
I guess I'm in favor of approving it. See anything that I take issue with. I, I guess the one question that I have with regard to um, salary increases.
Well, that if you vote yes, then we can't talk about.
Okay, we can't talk about it. Well, then I'm gonna, I'd like to, if I do a question.
So we have what? What's our roll call, please?
It was two no, the rest for yes. Well then.
Okay, you want an actual?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the motion is to approve all items seven B through seven G on the agenda. Counselor Montague.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor McGee.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
No.
Counselor Newton.
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski.
No.
The vote is split three to three.
I vote no as well, so that takes care of that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm here for your approval for a salary grade adjustment for our technical services supervisor. Who works in public works operations. The technical services work group includes our utility asset management and facility mechanics work. Work groups. This position supervises seven full-time employees that manage all of the data and track the maintenance associated. With the city's water, wastewater, stormwater and street assets. So all of the underground piping, valves, fire hydrants and street signs. He uh, also supervises the facility mechanics in our electrician. That maintain the large industrial uh, equipment at our water treatment plants and associated facilities. This work is very complex and highly technical and is key to managing city utilities and infrastructure in a responsible manner. So we recently reviewed and revised the job description for this position. Uh, to better reflect the actual job tasks and duties and responsibilities currently being performed. We subsequently asked HR to review and perform a salary survey in comparison with other similar positions. And they recommend a salary grade adjustment from an N-one-forty to N-one-forty-five. The budget impact uh, for this biennium is approximately five thousand dollars and there are adequate funds in the budget to accommodate. Uh, so I am requesting approval for this uh, salary grade adjustment for technical services supervisor. To go into effect retroactively uh, back to October first.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Are there any questions?
Counsel, new discussion? Any questions for?
I see that it's covered this year in the bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that for the bi- empty? Is that what I read?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, anybody else?
I move we approve the salary grade adjustment. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Say again. Oh, thank you so much. Next is request to reclassify economic development program coordinator, Matthew Rutgers, page thirty of your packet.
Yeah, good evening, uh, Mayor and Councillors. So I'm, I'm here to discuss um, a reclassification of our economic development uh, coordinated position. Which was made vacant uh, through the appointment to uh, of Sophie Adams into the economic development manager position. And as we did that, we, in evaluating that position as we usually do when they become vacant. It was quickly realized that the, the work that. That position was doing um, needed to be expanded significantly. Uh, we have a. Two-person economic development team for a city our size, which is pretty lean. Um, so we need that position to do a lot more. Currently is classified. They're assisting in economic development where we need that, that position to actually operate as a coordinator where they're. They're running economic development projects and really um. Working as almost a, as a team with the, the manager of that program. So this, this reclass would take the current coordinator position from an eight, one-twenty-eight to. An A-one-fifty position. I know those are just numbers and probably don't mean a whole lot to you, so what? What that we're basically equivalents to is approximately sixteen thousand dollar increase uh, across the biennium. So across two years. There's uh, plenty of money in the economic development budget to cover that without having to um, go outside to like the general fund for additional funding. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Have a motion?
I move we approve the authorization reclassifying existing one-point-old full-time equivalent. To, from an A-twenty, A-one-twenty to an A-one-fifty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Matt Director.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit here for the next one too.
Okay, so. Uh, item D, request to reclassify administrative assistant to administrative assistant coordinator, Matthew Rutgers, page thirty-one of your packet.
Yeah, so the, our, currently our uh, community development department has one administrative assistant. Um, who takes care of reviewing all of our letters or basically any information that, that leaves our department. Um, this position is uh, typically a fairly high turnover position. It does a lot. Um, and what we're trying to be able to do is reclass this position so that it, now it's gonna sound weird, but it can do more. Uh, and when I say do more, it's uh, more independent work, uh, as well as higher level work. Uh, that we really need that position to do. Uh, a lot of uh. Currently, when we have projects that require contracting, we're relying a lot on our finance department, which is great. Um, for efficiency, it's sometimes nice to be able to handle some of those tasks in, in health. Um, so we're really looking for efficiencies and as I reviewed this position and the classification with HR. We did a class comp across multiple jurisdictions and found comparables that would support. A reclassification of this from an A-one-thirty to an A-one-thirty-nine. Um, which expands the. The abilities of, or the description for this position and the things that it can do. Um, currently, it's a little bit limited for what we need it to do. The result of that is a approximately thirteen thousand dollar um. Budget increase for community development in this position across the biennium. So across the two years, we have significant or. Sufficient funds within the community development department as it's a shared cost between. Planning, building, economic, and economic development. So it's, this position serves all three of those. Um, so they're, they're able to split that, that cost amongst them and not need additional funds from the general fund. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Counsel? Any comments? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve this reclassification.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Next on tonight's agenda, item F, E, request to reclassify two single-world EMT positions. Fire chief Shane Wooton, page thirty-two of your packet.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. So I actually have the next two items and for those in the audience or watching, let me just start by laying a little bit of groundwork. That we receive federal dollar, well, first off, the Albany Fire Department provides the ambulance service to our community. And we receive federal dollars, ground emergency medical transport dollars that go through. Federal government down into the Oregon Health Authority that help offset. Our costs of treating and transporting individuals on Medicaid. It's a relatively new program. By new, I mean the last probably five years. We've been an active participant in it during that time. Well, if you recall, uh, during the mayor's message at the, when we started the budget. Uh, one of the items you identified was to add ambulance capacity in our community. And through the budget process, uh, we did that. We uh, added, or we are in the process of adding four individuals. Uh, of which will be assigned to an additional ambulance during the peak activity times in Albany. Well, as we went through the recruiting process, it, we had some really good candidate supply and. Kinda go with me here, on an ambulance, minimum staffing, if you will, you have a paramedic, which is the highest level of an EMT. And the lowest level is an EMT basic. Well, we originally had the idea, cause it's how we did it before, that we would have a paramedic and an EMT basic on an ambulance. Well, as we got applicants in, we actually had a lot of folks that were EMT basics, but were finishing their paramedic training. So what I'm coming to you is to reclassify all four of those positions. Into paramedic positions, where right now there's just two that are classified as paramedic. That'll allow us more flexibility in the hiring process to get the right individuals because. Like the two EMTs that have become paramedics, if we don't pay them a paramedic salary, they're going to go be paramedics somewhere else. And so it doesn't mean we will always be hiring for paramedics. But from a director's standpoint, we, we can't go above what we've talked to you about. We can go below. So we can hire EMT basics. This is just authorizing us to be able to hire the higher level individuals. The money uh, we have available in our ground emergency medical transport grant. So the funding is available for us to do it. I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselor Smith?
Comment. Um. I like it the way you think and I, I approve of this path. This is a. This is the fourth reclassification or reevaluation of staff that we've dealt with this evening and. I want to bring the public's attention to that, that, that the careful um, consideration of. Our staffing needs and the abilities of people we hire and what we ask them to do. Um, their positions are being adjusted on paper officially. Um, and salary-wise to reflect. That they're being compensated for their special set of skills. Um, I, the idea of having all of our people on ambulance crews as paramedic level. Should uh, give the public a lot of confidence in the folks who come to scoop them up when they need help. It certainly makes me feel better. Uh, so I, I just wanna make, make the public aware that. That that's what these things have um, amounted to and where they, where the thinking came from. And I would move to approve this.
So, so I, I would like to make a comment. Most of you know what I do for a living. This will give me the confidence and, and let my clients know. That when they get picked up or there's someone coming, they're qualified to do the job. And I think it will help them. Not be afraid, be less afraid than they already will be. And it really makes me feel good that when I recommend everyone via fireman or general and fireman. That with confidence I can say, paramedics are gonna come and make sure you get to where you need to be, to be safe and, and. And uh, taken care of. So I think it's a pretty program.
Thank you for advocating us during your budget message.
Yeah. Yes, Counselor Novak.
I too appreciate what we're doing. Um, I, one question. I too appreciate what we're doing. Um, I, one question with regard to all of the uh increases that we've approved, including, and I understand they're all great for this full biennium, but I'm wondering what the budget impacts will be on the next biennium. If, uh, uh, is that being taken into consideration? Are we gonna be in any sort of financial difficulty in the next biennium because of these salary increases doing right now? That's my only question.
Right. Okay, so let me, uh, yes, as far as the ground emergency medical transport fund is, uh, has adequate dollars for this and moving forward. Otherwise, we wouldn't wanted to have come to you in the budget process if we didn't think we could sustain, sustain the program. Um, so, yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And Mayor, is it, is, because I was asking about the other ones that we've approved, is, is it okay to that at this point?
Already voted.
Or once we voted, you can't ask anymore?
Right.
Oh, well, that's a concern that I, for the record.
I think, I think, I think, I think the rest of the directors feel the same way as the chief. We wouldn't have brought it, they wouldn't have brought it.
Okay, well, that makes better, thank you, because I, when I read that it's okay for, on a particular biennium, that hurts my heart, but I also like.
His, and, and we can hold him to the, the character.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm looking beyond the approved moment, and I appreciate that it's beyond biennium and in your particular uh case.
So, thank you very much. So next, we, we had a, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, go to your, um, your supplemental agenda. Uh, Chief, Fire Chief Seven Foxtrot, is approval of part-time, a point five FTE funded by inter-community health plan grant. Chief Wooton, you still here?
Yes, this was an administrative oversight. The last time I was here, or our last meeting, we discussed this grant program, and I had mentioned verbally and in the memo that we would be adding a point five FTE to, to that program. But uh my own fault, I didn't explicitly uh have it written out to where you approved the point five FTE. So I'm here today to ask for approval of that point five FTE, and I'm gonna go on a little bit of tangent, I'll be brief. Uh, through some of the movement and the addition of this point five FTE, we are actually internally downgrading a deputy chief's position to a division chief position. And I tell you that because I know we come to you all the time with items where we're increasing salaries or increasing costs. We do the flip side and downgrade positions as well. It's just we don't have to come to you to tell you that. Uh, so this is one of those instances where we're taking a deputy chief down to a division chief because we have some movement going on, but it's, it's less money and we don't have to get approval from you to, to spend less money.
Thank you for that explanation, Chief. Really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any questions?
How does the deputy chief feel about that down here?
Yeah, so it's the deputy chief actually that wants to go to part-time and be the community, the battalion chief position of community paramedic. So by going to part-time, he'll be at a new wage, which is lower than his current. And he will, uh, and then in assessing, you know, through succession planning, which is one of our department's strategic plan items, I, I believe that the next individual needs to start in the division chief position, get their feet underneath them, understand the job, before we just automatically promote somebody to be number two of an, in an organization. So it's possible down the road that, you know, we come to you uh with some sort of change, but for now, this is one of those where we're gonna go backwards a little bit.
Thank you.
Thanks for the explanation. Counsel, anything else? Counselor Smith?
The, uh, total amount, um, caught my attention because it's a six-digit number. That, that is completely grant-funded, is that correct?
One hundred percent grant-funded. Yep.
Thank you to Samaritan Health.
Yes. The coordinated care organization.
Yes.
Last time I couldn't remember CCO, and I was embarrassed.
I was, that's why I asked you the question.
Yeah, thank you.
I move we approve the point five FTE battalion chief community health position.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for the explanation. Next is item seven golf, would be municipal judge, most municipal judge contract approval. Item three two eleven to your packet. Melissa Humphries will be explaining it today. Check right.
Mayor and council. So my name is Melissa Humphries. Hi. I am here representing the Human Resources Department regarding the Municipal Court Judge Professional Services Agreement. The council directed the HR director to negotiate the terms and conditions. And what's been presented and agreed upon in the agreement is my understanding, consistent with the current and prior municipal court judge contracts. So if you have any questions, I'm hopefully able to answer them for you in my director's absence.
Any questions? Did she accept, she accepted the offer, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all I'm gonna do. I have a motion.
Let's hire her.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much for your presentation, and great work. Um, next on the agenda would be if I go on here. I know, business from the council. Um, I will start with Sep, Counselor Newton, because you're online. Counselor Newton? Oh, she's not there. Uh, Counselor McGee?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Novak?
I always appreciate when the public sucks up the cur, come in here and present any sort of concern they have, so I, I wanna thank Mr. Dennis and Mr. Quinn, always the director of the Downtown Association, whose presence I really like a lot. And I wanted to say that, uh, I, living in North, me and representing North Albany and the rest of Ward One, I share Mr. Dennis's concern about never knowing when my leaves in the street are going to be picked up. And I am purely hoping that we can work with Republic Services and appreciated that Mr. Dennis showed us the way they do it in Corvallis paperwork versus the way they do it in Albany is I have no idea. You just never know within a two-week period when they're going to be that he's right. The leaves fly everywhere, they clog up trains. I would really, really, really love to see, um, Public Works work with Republic as rapid as possible so that we can have a knowledge of when our leaves in the street for pickup. This season, I, I encourage you with all my heart, please reach out to Republic. Please, let's get this settled and worked out the way they've so nicely done it in Corvallis. Um, finally, I, how many people listen in to our meeting who might not know? I just thought I'd throw this out there because every day I find from someone else local that they have no idea my family business has closed, so I thought I'd mention that this evening. Bag's Hungarian restaurant, um, is no more. We have stepped away and sold our building and it will, um, it will be sweet in the future, which is for me to say because that's public knowledge, but I just wanted to say here publicly, I don't know if anyone who not be aware of that who would hear it here. But now you, and thank you to anyone everywhere who has supported us, our food, and uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes, uh, thank you, Director Grotto from the Albany Downtown Association, um. The Albany Historic Carousel is in fact going to have an unveiling coming up on the Saturday, December, October twenty-first, uh, at eleven AM. Uh, Sir Hugo Page the Griffin. Uh, that has been fourteen-plus years, getting to the point where it's going to be unveiled. Um, but it's a beautiful, beautiful animal, so come on down on Saturday, the twenty-first, and uh, enjoy the fun.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Montague?
Yeah, I, um, had the opportunity today to, uh, tour the Albany Helping Hands facility. And, um, it was a fantastic visit. I visited with the director there, Don Sparks, and um, and I, I just, I've got a lot of education on, um, what that facility provides to our community and their vision for the future. Um, and I, I'm, I'm really excited to see what they do in the future to help, you know, continue to serve our, our, our citizens, so very exciting today.
Counselor Smith?
Counselor Smith has three items this evening. Uh, the first is, uh, in response to the questions about leaf pickup and Republic Services. I, uh, contacted Julie Jackson this afternoon after receiving the email from Counselor Novak and, um, asked her to confirm my memory of the difference between Albany's system and Corvallis's system. Corvallis does provide leaf, they have, their agreement with Republic Services calls for much more frequent leaf pickup than we have. And it is also, then they pay a commensurate price for that. Um, Republic Services is happy to renegotiate our contract with us and, and expand service. Uh, but there, there's a cost to it. So, um, they have a predictable schedule because they pay for it. They have their bike lanes swept much more frequently, and they pay for it. That's what the people in Corvallis have wanted, so if Albany wants that, that's, that's available to them. Um, item number two, I was contacted, um, Counselor McGee and I and the mayor were contacted yesterday by a resident, um, of the Timber Ridge area regarding, uh, lighting at a laundromat that she uses on this side of the freeway. There is no exterior lighting there. She was concerned about safety. Um, has had no, uh, success contacting the people who are in charge of the business to take care of that and asked us to consider employing, um, the principles of the crime prevention through, uh, an environmental design program. Something that we have been, we've discussed in the past. I don't remember, I don't believe this particular council has had a full presentation on that, uh, those principles, but it's how to make the exterior of your building and your property safe for people who work there and do business there and live there. Um, in the meantime, I, if you would like to have, uh, a work session on that, uh, on those principles, um, we, someone can ask for that. In the meantime, I, uh, uh, spoken to Matthew Rutgers about how this would affect or how we can take care of the situation at the laundromat, and he has a number of options for dealing with, uh, exterior lighting to make it safer there. Um, so I contacted the, my correspondent, uh, today and let her know that I would be talking about this and that we would be, we're following up at the staff level. Item number three relates to a document you'll find in your yellow folders this evening. Thank you to the staff for reproducing that for me to distribute to you. I would like the council to reconsider the flag policy that we adopted on June fourteenth. I don't believe that it's adequate. I thought at the time that we adopted it and I was in favor of it that it would be a good compromise position for dealing with flags other than non-governmental flags on our governmental building flag poles. I have changed my mind since then. Well, I haven't changed my mind. My original position was the only flags that belong there are the flags that we're required to fly by, by law. And that's what I think our policies, policy should be. It doesn't, um, it's not ambiguous. It's direct. It says what belongs there, and that's where it stops. And I just, I believe that the American flag, the flag of the state of Oregon include everyone who lives in Albany, and I believe that that's what should fly there. End of story. I would really like, I would like to rescind, uh, Resolution seventy-four-two, but I'd like to hear your discussion as well.
We'll address it now? Can we address it now? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, that, what I provided for the public record is a copy of, um, what is it? It's from, um, Oregon Department of Administrative Services statewide policy on flag protocol at public buildings. And the state policy is to fly the US flag, the Oregon state flag, and the National League of Families POW MIA flag simultaneously. And there is a caveat for the MIA POW flag that was, um, added to the policy in twenty fifteen through an act of the legislature. And the policy says that that flag should fly if you have room for it. If your flag pole is too short or too close to the building and you can't safely fly it there, you don't have to. You can display it in an alternate location if you want, which is what we have chosen to do. We were not flying that flag for a couple of years because our flag pole is too short and it's too close to the building and the flag was taking a beating. And, um, it just wasn't a, a, a proper way to, to take care of that. But I, I think, um, I believe that this is a more equitable way to um, to address our, the public that we serve and to use our public facilities.
Counselor Novak?
I agree.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Trying to read between the lines here is what's written. Uh, I, what you say, what it says is, is exactly what it says, but it doesn't say that it's limited to just those three flags.
And this is a, this is an example of language for, for the state of Oregon. My proposal is that it's limited to those three flags. Our use of our flag poles would be limited to the American flag, the state of Oregon flag, and the POW MIA flag where practical. But the, as the two primary flags would be the American flag and the Oregon flag.
I, I, I understand. I understand that perfectly. However, our flag poles right now cannot address, cannot even hold three flags.
Correct.
So, uh, until we address that issue, we can't really say that we're limited to just what this says here.
We can, because it's in the, it's in the original bill that was, and it, it should be in here.
It isn't there.
Yeah. It, it says that if, if you don't, if you don't have the capacity, you don't have to do it.
Right. That, that, that part's true. That's what I'm, I'm agreeing with. I'm, I'm just saying that it doesn't say that you cannot have anything else. But you're trying to say.
I'm saying that I don't want it. I don't think we, I don't think it's right for us to have anything else. I think it's equitable to have the flags that represent everyone rather than to, um, temporarily or permanently espouse a different cause or a different viewpoint. I, I just, those are government flag poles. They should fly government flags. It represents everyone.
It's very equitable. Agreed. That's the only equitable, truly equitable way to do this.
I disagree. I, I don't think that we should limit ourselves to just the three flags. I think we can figure out how to um, fly other flags and, and celebrate other things, so I, I'm not for limiting. I am, um, open to looking at our policy if there is some deficiency there and, and maybe.
Point, uh, uh, you know.
Some editing, but right now we can't, we are, you know, we are only able to fly the two right now, but I think in the future we can figure out how to fly more and, and I absolutely, uh, don't think that we should be voting on anything without um, Counselor Newton here, who originally, um, proposed that flag policy.
On, on a permanent basis, I totally agree with you, but on a temporary basis, I agree with Jackie.
Now, I don't understand the distinction between temporary and permanent.
Thirty days.
Those clash.
I disagree.
To me, it's one or the other.
I, I don't think they have to be mutually exclusive, but I do agree with Counselor Montague that we should wait until Counselor Newton is here, since she was the one who originally brought this topic up, and it would be interesting to hear. And I am open to looking at whatever we need to do to make it equitable and, and what, what have you, but I don't think they have to be mutually exclusive in that way.
I agree with you that it ideally, if I was, I thought that all six of us were going to be here this evening when I brought it up, and all six of us were initially. So I, I, um.
And, and her laptop died. She did text in that her, she didn't have her charger. She wasn't able to continue with the meeting. But I think we should just wait until she gets here, but I'd be definitely open to discussing.
What would you like to do, Counsel? We'll draw, we'll draw your motion to the next meeting.
Yep.
Please make that motion.
I will withdraw my motion and make it at the next meeting, the next meeting where all councilors are present.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, um, and I guess leave that to me. Um, where's my notes here? Well, thank you very much for that discussion. Um, so the council, some of us members will be attending the Lake of Oregon Cities Council. So the council, some of us members will be attending the Lake of Oregon Cities Council Conference tomorrow, Friday and Saturday. And I will be speaking on behalf during the panel on community engagement. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, I think I told you I had this great, great day with Tangent Elementary School in the morning last week. Kids are great and they actually posted on Facebook me interacting with the children. But the kids are really pressing their mayor to do the FOI mayor contest. So I'm pretty excited about that spreading. And last but not least, I'd like to thank these two young women. Can you please stand and tell us who you are? Come up to the microphone, tell us who you are. Come on. Don't be scared. I told you, you might be surprised. So they've been shadowing me all day today. And I'd like to let, introduce yourself and tell us where you're from and your thoughts on America so far.
I'm Joanna and I'm from Germany. Yeah. I'm here for the whole school year and I will be leaving in June 2024. And it's really nice here. I like Albany.
Anything to stand out for you other than me? Anything else stand out for you? So did you have a good time today?
Yes, it was really fun. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lizzie. I'm from the country of Georgia. And I'm also here for a whole study year. I really liked today. Okay.
It's okay. So what we did today was we just did my normal city council day routine. I called constituents back that had filed complaints or needed information from me. I took her to some sites to show them some of the developments going on in town. We actually went to the carousel and I bought my tokens for the kids. And we saw, met people there. They had a great conversation with Kirby Miller, was carving. So it was just a nice all-around day. And then we went over the agenda. We kind of ran through the agenda at the, at my office. And so kind of prepared them to kind of show them what we do. And then they're always welcome to come and, come and spend time at the meetings and learn about the city of Albany. But I want to personally thank you for spending the day with me. It was very enlightening.
We also want to thank you. So this is a leadership project that we had to do. And now we have to write what we learned from this leader, why we choose this leader and stuff like this. And what we did today together really like proves that you are a great leader. And we, why we are here, like we are here to gain some leadership qualities. And I think today we gained some profitable qualities from you. So thank you.
And I learned from you as well. So thank you ladies for coming today. You're always welcome in America. So please come back. Okay? Thank you very much. With that, we will now, ladies, you can also call your ride and have them pick you up because we want to go to a different session. Okay? Thank you. Next, we're going to city manager report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a couple of things. And, and you know, the, the fact that we have visitors from abroad, I think is a wonderful thing. But it reminds me of the events of last Saturday and what a horrible, what horror we witnessed. So that evil was something that I think we, we are all impacted by. And many in our community, I would say, are impacted or affected, whether it's locally or in the state, around the nation. And it's just my belief that in times like these, that we ought to stress the importance of coming together and caring for one another. You know, compassion and understanding remain elusive around the world, but it's compassion and understanding that ultimately helped to bring lasting peace. So anyway, much closer to home, I appreciated Counselor Novak bringing up the question about staffing and the cost of staffing in the out years. And the mayor is correct. Yes, department directors and I think about that all the time. You can imagine, as Counselor Smith pointed out, that staffing needs are evolving all the time. They're changing all the time. They're changing with circumstances. They're changing with budget realities. They're changing with community demands. So that does not, the fact that these positions were, were changed or reclassified does not mean that there won't be pressures on the budget, the next budget. And oftentimes, as many of you have seen in the past, we are faced with the grim realities of having to trim positions or leave positions open, frozen. So again, thank you for pointing that out because the long-term effect in the budget out years is something that's very important. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank Chris Bailey for standing in for me as acting city manager for the last week and a half, while I attended the ICMA conference in Austin and then while I attended my nephew's wedding. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so now we will, the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with RS 192 dot 66 dash two, sub, sub paragraph two, sub page. I'm going to exit executive session 8:01 PM. Any other discussion?
Hey, we have that new mediation.
So with that, I will join the meeting. Next meeting is Monday, October 23rd, 2023 at 4:00 PM for a work session. Wednesday, October 25th, 2025, 2023 at 6:00 PM for a regular council meeting and that'll adjourn. Thank you.